We have Jim Diessso, and Lillian White, and Heather De La Riva, and Bob Wilkins, and Rick Kinsella. Okay? Are there anybody else? And we have our library director with us tonight, Carolyn Jerakopoulos.
Hello.
And the co-chair of the steering committee for the Capitol Campaign for the new Oneida Public Library Building Project, Brad Adams.
Yep.
Each year, a week before our budget vote and election of trustees, we hold this event to inform the public about those candidates that are running for a trustee seat, and also the operating budget that we're presenting for public approval. This year, we've chosen not to increase our operating budget for the next fiscal year. And so this year, well, not even so, but this year, we're holding a referendum to gain approval for the acceptance of an award from the U.S. Department of Agriculture that will enable us to begin construction of a new Oneida Public Library. Therefore, the purpose of this meeting is to first, inform the public about the candidates running for the Board of Trustees, and second, to present information about the referendum to gain approval for the acceptance of the award from the USDA. There will be two presentations. The procedure will be as follows. First, following each presentation, I will ask if there are any statements or questions that pertain to the presentation. Next, a person will be limited to one statement or question at a time, not to exceed three minutes. We won't have any questions until the presentation is finished. When a person is called on for a statement or a question, please state your name and your residence. Now, we have asked that anyone who has a prepared statement, we have asked you to sign up. And the sign-up sheet is in my hand. But if you want to sign up, Rick is back there with another piece of paper, and you can sign up, okay? All right. Any questions as to the procedure? Good. All right. The first presentation will involve candidates for a seat on the Board of Trustees. We have one candidate, and that is incumbent trustee Jim Diessso. Jim?
Thank you, Pat. As Pat said, my name is Jim Diessso. I've been on the board for one year. I've lived in Oneida. My wife and I have lived in Oneida for 37, 38 years, and have raised three kids in this community. All of our children are adults, but we remember the times when we were a young family in Oneida. And Debbie would, mostly Debbie, so much maybe, would take the kids to story hour. And it was a great place to meet other young families, to engage the kids. And Oneida Library has always been a very important part of our community, just like our schools and our hospitals. It's a pleasure, and I'm very proud to be a board member. I joined the board about two and a half years ago. I retired from New Hartford Central Schools in June of 2012 as the technology director for 16 years. But prior to that, my career was also in technology. I was in educational sales for years, taught years. I was a technology trainer. I was a classroom teacher. So, technology has been a very important part of my life, and part of my role of volunteer work with the library. On Wednesday mornings, I join a couple of other board members, Rick Kinsella, Bob Wilkins, a couple of other folks who have technical backgrounds, like Kevin Roy. And we're here every Wednesday from 9:00 to 10:00, providing technical support, not to all seniors, but mostly seniors. But, you know, I think that's, I think, and many of the board members feel that, you know, this library that we're ready to hopefully move from, you know, it's got issues. And this vote coming up is about the future. Technology is an important part of our future. It's, you know, a library is really more, it's a community center. And this library is going to have those facilities to support those endeavors. So, that's pretty much a little bit about my background, you know? And I hope that I can rely on your support to be re-elected to the board. Thank you very much. Any questions for me? I'm wearing, I think, Nautica tonight.
He was concerned.
It's a joke.
Did anyone sign up to make a statement about Jim? Okay.
Thank you.
It may be too long. I might be wondering what that thumping is. They're chopping ice, they're chopping icicles and things. This is an old building, it's got lots of problems, huge icicles are one of those problems. All right, next? Next week, the residents of the Oneida Public Library District will be asked to determine whether the OPL may accept the award from the United States Department of Agriculture. Brad Adams, co-chair of the steering committee of the Capitol Campaign for the new library project, and Carolyn Jerakopoulos, our director of the OPL, will now present information regarding that award and the impact on district residents. Brad and Carolyn?
Got some charts here. The idea is that we want everyone, we know there are a lot of questions about this, so we want to make sure everyone understands here what we're talking about here. You know, our library is 60 years old, and the way this library was built 60 years ago, libraries are very different than they are now. And a good example of this right here is the size of the library. And people are asking, why do we need a library that's 18,000 square feet? Well, the standard for libraries is 1 and 1/2 to 2 square feet per resident. We have 15,411 people in our district. So, you can see, that would suggest a library using library standards of starting at 22,600 square feet at a minimum, going up to 30,800 square foot at a maximum. We are not proposing, and we are not ascertaining that a library should be more than what we've recommended here for the moment, 18,000 square feet. You can see where we're right now, 8,800 square feet. Our library is very full, right, Carol?
It's very full. In fact, this room, according to the firemen, 30 people maximum.
Uh-oh.
Also, we are supposed to be complying with the American for Disabilities Act?
Which we are not. We are so non-compliant that it's very embarrassing to the staff that works here, that has to help these people. In fact, a ramp right now is not even legal. We do not have an automatic door that opens. Our staff has to run out and help these people up the ramp. People in a motorized wheelchair, they do not have access to downstairs. We have an elevator, but people in a motorized wheelchair cannot fit in it. So, they cannot access any of the books, any of the materials downstairs. To me, that's very embarrassing. It should not be. But, in the new library, all one floor, totally handicapped accessible, we will be in compliance.
So, you can kind of get a picture in terms of the size, why we're proposing the size library we are. So, even though the recommendation is a minimum of 22,600 square feet, we think, for the initial, and certainly there are some opportunities for us to reduce it, we'd be at 18,000 square feet will be sufficient. Now, let's take a look at a comparison with our peer libraries. Oneida currently spends on its budget here at the library, 2741 per resident here in the Oneida Special Legislative District. That compares to Canostota at 3283, Chitnango 3454, and Casnovia at 5873. We put that in perspective because the proposed library is going to have us increase our budget in order to be able to pay for the library. But what we wanted to illustrate is to make sure that people understand, we do not spend a lot. We probably spend, we spend less than any other library in our area, and we are in the smallest library right now in our area. Anything you want to add to that, Carolyn?
Our budget, but people may question our budget. We are not increasing it this year. Our budget is bare bones, believe you me. Our staff is paid, I don't even want to talk about what our staff has paid. Some of our staff members at the desk are on food stamps. We cannot keep up with the building repairs because there is not a budget for that. We have very, very bare bones budget.
So...
I worked very hard at keeping it that way, and it's a struggle, believe you me.
So, the facility that we're in is the same facility that was in place when the high school was over on Main Street, when the hospital was over here across the street. The schools have been updated, the hospital's been updated, City Hall's been updated. The library is really the last major piece of infrastructure in the city of Oneida that has not been updated. So, let's talk about the cost of that. Because this is really where people have had some questions, and want to make sure we understand that the cost of the construction of the library, of the building itself, $4.4 million. That comes out to $244 a square foot. That is below the national average of $248 a square foot for building a library. The additional costs that go into that, there's obviously things like the architect, technical support, there's a certain amount of administration, and dealing with, when you're dealing with the USDA and with other...
Grants.
Other grants and so forth. And then, there's a contingency built in, a 10% contingency. So, certainly, we start down this road, we don't know, once you start, if anyone's ever had to build anything before, they know you can't be 100% sure cost. So, there is a contingency budget built in, we hope we don't have to use that. So, how are we paying for this now? So far, we have raised $2.3 million in donations, pledges, and grants, right here, and that's what we anticipate, that right, coming up to a total of $3 million. And then the balance, $3,110,000, is in the form of the USDA loan. Now, we've heard the term, you know, you might ask, wait a minute, you just said a $3 million loan. Aren't we voting on a $5 million, $5 million loan? Let's make sure we understand how this is all going to work. I hope the numbers, everyone can see that, it might be a little small. The total cost of the project, $6,120,000. That's everything. The land, the building, everything. Donations and grants, $2.3 million, and we anticipate raising another $710,000 in additional donations and grants. That leaves the balance to be funded of $3.11 million. So, the USDA federal loan, the $5,67,000 is a pre-qualification. That's what they've made available to us. That doesn't mean we have to go out and use it, and we don't intend on using all of it. But, the USDA, when they make those qualifications, they want to make sure that once we start this project, it's going to be completed, because they're not going to make money available to us, and then have the project go halfway, and then have someone's pledge or commitment or grant that they don't have control of pulled out from under us. I don't think the Gorman Foundation, or the Savings Bank, or anyone else is going, who have been so good in terms of making pledges to us, are going to change their mind. However, from the USDA's perspective, they want to ensure that's going to be completed. So, of the $5,67,000, we expect to utilize $3,110,000. That'll be at a rate of 4% over 30 years. That will leave a balance of close to $2 million in that qualification and that commitment that they made to us that we don't anticipate using. We have no plans on using it, because our intention is not to saddle or create anything more than what we need. So, that gives an overview. I hope I've answered and cleared up any misconceptions here.
Okay, thank you, Brad and Carolyn. The floral presentation is complete, and now, we will, those of you who have statements, we're going to hold off on the statements until we take some general questions, questions to clear up any points of information that Brad and Carolyn will be able to answer. Okay? So, if you would like to ask a question once I call on you, please just give your name and your residence, okay? All right. Who has a question that they would like to ask Brad or Carolyn regarding the presentation? Okay, no questions at this time, so we'll move on to the statements, all right? We can go through the statements in the order in which you signed up, and remember, there's a three-minute limit on the statement. So first, if Fred Sianfracco?
Yep.
Would you like to make your statement? Go ahead, say your name and where you live, just so I...
Well, I didn't even know what we were going to do here today, but I'm not a library person, but that doesn't mean, just because I'm not a library person, that I don't want. What I want to do is I want to see through the previous library what its use is. And I came in yesterday, and I talked to Caroline, and she really filled me in very nicely. And it's nice to have good and high hopes. Brad's presentation, the only problem is with everybody's presentation, it's always one side. When you say you're comparing it to other facilities, Oneida is by itself. If I were to compare my business to other places, or if they try to run a business here, they couldn't do it the way I do it. Everybody runs a business and/or a library for specific needs in this location. So, it's nice to have the other comparisons to give you something to go by. And the number of people that you have here doesn't mean that that's the number of people you actually got coming to the library. Again, I'm not a library person, neither are my kids, but my kids are educated. My son is a professor, on and off, depending if he's doing too much other work, but he works at RIT. He used to work for Intel, but he's never gone to the library. He's married to a schoolteacher. She doesn't go to the library. Her brother's a doctor. He doesn't go to the library. But that doesn't mean we don't need libraries. I just want to make sure that with the economy the way it is today, and it's very poor, especially here, I don't care what it is outside, right here in Oneida, the economy's very poor, that the money allocated seems to be excessive at this time. I don't think we reviewed it long enough, and don't take this the wrong way. It's almost, I can appreciate the enthusiasm, especially Caroline, she's got a lot of enthusiasm. And that's what keeps this library going, and thank goodness that she has that and other people that work here. But that's not everybody's. I haven't talked to one person, I've talked to hundreds, probably thousands, that want the library. But that doesn't, again, that doesn't mean we don't want the library. I just think it's an awful lot of money right now. Minimumly, we can't seem to cut the budget on the existing library. I don't know when those new windows were put in, but they're among the cheapest windows that you could buy. It would help if we would close. There's only one window that is actually closed in this library, just one. All the other ones are open, not secure, not locked, and air's coming straight through them. We did take the one air conditioner out that was in this room, but we still have the other air conditioners in here. And that would cut the cost of this library for its heating and cooling probably by 35%. And what I'm getting to on that, if we can't take care of this one, we need to be able to take care of a new one if we get one.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, Dawn Coupiers.
I wasn't planning to speak, but I fell. I know, it was a last-minute thing. My name is Dawn Coupiers, and I live directly across the street from where the new library's going to be. And I am absolutely thrilled. I live in a lovely Victorian house. I think it's going to improve the neighborhood, what my house is worth, but more importantly, I think that the library is going to continue to improve my life and the life of my husband and my daughter. We're big library users, we read constantly. I've been bringing my, I brought my daughter here when she was a little girl to the story hour. I moved here 28 years ago, kind of kicking and screaming, and this probably was a lifeline for me to have this library available. I've worked in the field of criminal justice and addiction for, I'm in my 35th year. I've worked in this community for 27 of those years, and I can tell you that there are still people who cannot read, and people who do not have access to computers, and people who need to come here to learn how to read, apply for jobs online, because you can't apply for a job anymore unless you do it online. I have my clients come here, do volunteer work, because they're required to do that. This place has been a godsend to me, to my family, to the clients that I serve, and I am thrilled to be living across the street from that new library. I love the library. I want it to be there. I think it's going to be a wonderful asset, and I hope that everybody else agrees. Thank you.
Okay, next, Ed Lottermoser.
Ed Lottermoser, 9 West West Street, Oneida Castle. First of all, Carnegie's dead. We haven't got any many people, don't even build libraries anymore. Do we need to tell us how? It's a pretty darn fancy-looking building for $4 million. Can't we build something a little more economical than that? How many paid employees do we have now versus what we're going to have to have for the new place? The tough people in this school district, I take it that's the boundary to the library district and the school district?
Yes.
A lot of us are retired, and we don't have bottomless pits for pockets, or pockets for money for increases. The school district has never, ever reduced taxes, for crying out loud, since I've lived here, and I can't conceive of these taxes ever going down either for the new library. I just can't really see why the city gave up that beautiful property over there to build one building on it, when they could have built six to 10 houses on it and gotten taxes off it, rather than having a library there that's going to do nothing but drain taxes for the rest of its career. I'm not anti-library, like the other gentleman says, but I don't believe that this beautiful building is an absolute necessity. It's a want and not a need. Thank you.
Okay, Paul Thomas?
I'm sorry. I'm Paul Thomas. I've been a resident of the area for 39 years. I wasn't planning to speak, but if I could address Mr. Sianfracco, our average patron visits in the library are 80,000 a year, people utilizing this library. And a lot of people do not have either a computer at home or internet service. And like Dawn said, people need to use the internet to apply for a job, almost any job out there now, you need a job. The kids from school that don't have a computer at home or internet access, they can come here because the computers are tied into the school, and they can do their homework here. There are just so many programs, GED program, you aren't going anywhere in this world if you don't have at least a high school education. And the story hours, all the programming here in the library, unfortunately, this facility is way outdated. The cost of building this, if I remember correctly, the cost of building this facility in today's dollars would be $1.7 million. We're going to build something two and a half times the size of that for three times the cost. So, dollar for dollar, we aren't spending a lot of money to build a new library. And, tell me a second.
And next, is it Tracy Dowd?
I wasn't actually planning to speak either.
Tracy, would you give your residence?
I live in Kingston, New York. I don't live in Oneida. I didn't even know this was happening tonight, but I came with my mom, and I was telling her on the way down here that, growing up, we lived down West Walnut Street, my parents still live there, and I practically lived at this library growing up. We didn't have a lot of money, and we couldn't afford to do a lot of things, and this is where I could come and read and hang out, and not all of my siblings were big readers, but some of us were. And I really do think that this is an investment for this community, and Oneida was a wonderful place to grow up. I think it's, we want it to stay a great place to grow up, and I think that, you know, we need things like this for the community, and for kids who, because really, not every kid has a computer at home, or, so, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
All right, that completes the names on those who signed up to make statements. We can entertain some more questions?
Sure.
As long as they're specifically to the presentation. If you'd like to stand up and give your name, and, why do I have to stand up? Give your name and your residence, please.
I don't have to stand up, okay.
You don't.
That's very nice of you. I'll stand up anyway. My name is Jim Brown, residence is 1527 Middle Road, that's in this district. What I would like to know is if there's a balance left that we buy from, we get the money from the ag department, okay? Obviously, over a period of years, we're going to pay that back. What are the plans for paying it back? How are we going to come up with that money, and how are we going to pay it back, so that we have a rough idea of, is it going to impact taxes? What's the thinking on that?
Right, right, right. When the borrowing is made, the $3.11 million, that equates to annual debt service of $180,000 a year, and the taxes, your library taxes will be increased to, what?
Just the dime a day.
Oh, yeah, yeah, of course, yeah. It comes out to about, roughly about a dime a day in terms of the residence. So, if you take the total tax base here, it's roughly about $700, $700 million, and you take the $180,000, against that, it comes up to about 25 cents per thousand. And that's, the library tax is increased to cover that, that annual cost until it's paid, and then it goes away.
Okay. How long do you expect the payment period to be?
That'll, that's done over a 30-year period.
Taking it out 30 years, huh? Taking it out 30 years, huh?
Right. And the interest rate is at a rate, right now it's capped at 4%, and it could go down lower than 4%, so if it goes down lower, then we wear the benefit of that lower rate, but it'll never go higher.
Okay. Okay, another question? No more questions?
I'm sorry, Dan Jones from East Walnut. The vote is here?
Yes.
Next week?
Yes.
From when to when?
Noon to nine.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, yes, question.
Although, we're going to be borrowing, during that, you know, because that's, it's going to be some time before it's actually physically there. Are we going to be doing any kind of fundraising, and to continue possibly-
Oh yeah, yeah, I mean, I think I showed here before, let's go back here, there's an additional $700,000 here, an additional loans and grants here that we anticipate. Certainly, there were a number of grants we become eligible for, once this referendum passes, and I think that's a very important point. We have a lot of people who are anxious to participate in this project, a lot of people are waiting to make sure it's going to happen, and I think that's the one important thing that people got to realize, in terms of what this, as we say, this, by prequalifying for the 5 million, that doesn't mean we're going to spend it, but it gives us a lot of leverage to go out and be able to apply for grants, and for other gifts, in order to make this library happen.
So the fundraising will continue, but possibly could be less than what we're talking about?
It could be. We might not need the 3 million, you know, we'll continue, but we don't want to promise one thing, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to overpromise and deliver here. We're trying to give, be as transparent as possible, make sure people have all the information out.
Okay, another question?
I'm wondering if somebody could point out some of the things that will be available to people, that will save them money, in spite of the fact that their taxes might be higher, the number of myriad things to do with the new computer devices that they will be able to get here for free, instead of buying them from amazon.com games. I mean, you people know more about that than I do.
Carolyn, or Jim.
And I'm sorry, I'm Carol Flyer from the night.
Yeah, I think, you know, when we talk about, one of the things that we spend a lot of time on, on Wednesdays, is working with my library, Zineo magazines, that, you know, people pay, you know, people pay magazine subscriptions, $30 a year for a magazine, the number of magazine subscriptions. That's $30, you know, you don't need to spend that. You can get those resources right at the library. You know, DVDs that people, you know, people will pay Amazon, you know, for, you know, $100 a year. Well, if you want to watch Homeland, you don't have, you can come here, get the DVD, it's free. And not everybody's got that money, and that's the kind of stuff that we're talking about. You know, do we want a society where everybody's got to pay for everything? That almost sounds like someone told me un-American, and that's what the library's all about, and those resources, and that is a big part of our future. Technology is part of it, that whole digital life. You know, when we talk about things like, you know, how many people, you know, are Blue Cross Blue Shield members, that may have had their accounts hacked? And what are you doing about those kinds of things? What do you learn about freezing your accounts? The things that I learned from some of my colleagues that I work with on Wednesdays in the library, are things that need to be shared with everybody in our community, about your digital life. That's a big piece, and there's a lot of information to share. We can't do that stuff here effectively.
I might add a couple of other benefits here, Carol, that I think shouldn't be overlooked, and that's, one, the immediate impact of having this project here in the city of Oneida. It's 115 jobs, construction jobs, and with those construction jobs will come certainly a lot of ancillary business here, from the other businesses in the area to support that. Long-term, there are plenty new jobs coming to our area. No, it's not Oneida Limited anymore, but companies like New Air, and the SUNY Nano Technology Center. And we always are trying to attract people to the Oneida Healthcare. These people have choices of where they can live, and we want them to be here in Oneida. So, we think that that's also one very important thing.
Can I just add, too, that, you know, we have a lot of people come here who have, you know, it is tough times, and they don't have the money to have, forget internet, they can't even afford TV in their home. So they come here and they check out eight, 10 videos, and that's their cable, because they can do it here. That's your library cost in one visit, boom. And when you're in tough times, that's when you want to share your resources. That's when you pool together, you share your resources, and everybody benefits. That's what you do when you're, you know, a community, and you need to help each other. That's, this is the place you do it.
I just want to say, I took offense at one of the comments that was printed in the Dispatch a week or so ago, about misgrants using the library, and I thought, anybody who comes to the library is not a misgrant. They're not out burglarizing houses, or going to strip clubs, they're coming to the library to improve their life in some way, through knowledge, or through use of the computer that they don't have at home, and we as a community should be supporting those people, and encouraging people from the halfway house, or the people from the other side of town that maybe don't have. Just because we can afford all the goodies, doesn't mean that our town won't be a better place, if we provide things for those who can't afford those things. And that should be part of being a good citizen, in my opinion, of looking out for the other people who have less than we do.
And since I have to stand up here and say this stuff, I'm going to say two things to, the new building will have tons of plugs, tons of outlets. I was in here the other day, and I was using my computer, and, turn off that technology where I was using the computer, and it was, the battery was going down, I was using the wireless, of course, the battery was going down, so I plugged in my charger. Another guy was using the wireless on his phone, he had his plugged into the other. Well, another kid wanted to use his computer, and they're over there, "I can't, there's no place to plug it in." I said, "Okay, I'm ready to go, here, you can have my half of the outlet." You know, it's just, it's bad. A new building will take care of that. Two hours ago, where we're sitting, it's not comfy. I heard the comment, "Why, you know, we need to have this in a bigger room." Well, this is it. This is our meeting room. And two hours ago, this place was packed with families and birds of prey. There was a huge owl, about that big, and people were hanging out at the door, trying to see these things. The room was filled, and if you could have seen the looks on these people's faces, and a lot of these people, they can't go to the state fair, or, you know, other places and pay the money, they were here, and it was a great thing, and I'm just glad the fire department didn't come in to see how many people.
Plus parking.
Yeah.
Okay, are there any other questions?
Maybe Carolyn can address this, because Jim and I both do the technology on Wednesday mornings, and I've heard a lot of people say, "Well, libraries have no future, because you get all the books you need electronically." So, I haven't heard anybody address, you know, if we can get everything we need electronically, what do we need the building for?
Every book you see on our very overcrowded shelves. We have a very strict reading policy at this library, because we are overcrowded. So, we give a dusty book, it's called Dusty Book from Mid-York, and every book that has not circulated in the past three years, we discard and give to the friends to sell at minimum. And still, we're overcrowded. But, we have some 60,000 books on our shelves, that have gone out in the past three years. This is the power of a hardcover book. We also have access to eBooks. Our circulation is growing for eBooks. We have, last month, 325 eBooks that were checked out through the library, but we also have 7,000 books that were checked out. This is monthly. So this is the power of books. So every book you see on this shelf has been checked out in the last three years. Now that is an amazing testament to the usage of this library. But we also have tons of programs, we have an amazing groundbreaking GED program, we also have an ESOL program, and we try, we get lots and lots of permits from people about programs. Michelle has great programs, Tom has great programs, and so we really try to serve everyone here in Oneida. And we take suggestions, so if there's something else you would like or need, we will try to help you.
And we also have lots of volunteers.
And we have many volunteers. We have a wonderful friends organization that struggles. You should see our staff bathroom, because people bring in their books, and we're like, "Hmm, where are we going to put the books?" Because there is no storage in this library. And in the staff bathroom, we have one little aisle, to get to the bathroom, and the rest of the books are stored up to the ceiling. Four of us live upstairs, you saw that.
I saw it.
Four of us live upstairs, in a fire trap, in the attic. That attic has one exit, it goes all the way downstairs, there's a stairwell to the basement. If a fire started in that basement, we would not survive, because there is no way out. You saw that.
There's no window.
There's no window. It drives the firemen crazy, that we're up there, but there's no place else. In the kitchen that the staff eats at, we have all these shelves with all our storage supplies. So we have this little table, that we eat at, that only seats two. We have a bare bone staff, but we make do. We try to serve everybody in the best way we can.
You know, you bring up a point, Carolyn, that I think needs to be made, is that even though we're moving to a larger library here, the design of the library is such that we'll be able to maintain the current staffing.
That's right, and that was a question you had, sir. This one-story library, one-story, it's an open design, so that from the circulation desk, my staff, the two people that work at the circulation desk, will be able to see the whole library. Now, this library is a nightmare, because there's a downstairs that you can't see anything. So, at night, I only have two on staff, so they try to get down there, but the staff is busy at the desk, so this is another, is a security issue here, that we will not have there.
And, you know, our two biggest costs will be ongoing, will be staffing and energy, both of which we've tried to address here with the design.
That's right.
So the fact that it's all on one floor, like that, may make it seem larger when comparison to this library, but that's because we've got a basement here, and then an upstairs.
See, this library, we're used to rooms, there aren't going to be rooms. And this new library is very exciting, it's open. And for our handicap, don't get me started, but for our handicap, three minutes. I'm sorry, get me started here. But you know, for our handicap and wheelchairs, you're supposed to be able to go in an aisle of books, and go around, and come out. Nobody can do that here. It's criminal. It's a problem. We need that new library.
Can I just add on the eBook saving? There's only, only 4% right now of the circulation of eBooks, to begin with.
4% of the circulation?
4% of the circulation of eBooks. So the rest is all still, you know, textbooks. The other thing is that not everything is produced in digital format. I mean, you know, we-